Today is Tuesday, November 29th. It is 6:35 PM and I'd like to call this special meeting of the Planning Commission to order. First order of business, I'll entertain a motion to begin an executive session.
So moved.
Jason?
Second.
Thank you, Rich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Fantastic. Do we need any discussion?
You have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. You're right. You said that, sorry.
You've amended the motion to invite town council and Mr. Gashel.
And our alternates.
Correct. And you should probably note that the purpose of going into executive session is stated on your agenda.
I'm off the internet here, so we've got to fix that, too. Let's try that again. Jason, you made the original motion. Would you like to amend to include that the purpose of the executive session is stated on our agenda? And that we would like to invite our town council, Attorney Mark Demarka, as well as Planning Director Gary Gashel, and our alternates who are in this room to remain for executive session?
I do.
Do you second the amended motion?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion on the amended motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Great. Good evening. Thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight. It is 7:01 and I would like to call the special meeting of the Planning Commission for Tuesday, November 29th, 2022, to order. I'm going to do a quick roll call. Nicole Davison?
Present.
Richard Gordon?
Present.
Michelle Williams is present. Tom Fitting?
Here.
And Jason Devo.
Here.
Absent tonight is Kirk Scott, so I'm going to ask that we seat one of our alternates. It's going to be Olivia Fairchild. Could you come on up and join us? Thank you. And before you sit, we'll go ahead and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Did we have any additions to the agenda for tonight?
None.
None, okay. Okay, now, we do have a public hearing coming up later in the agenda, but our item three right now is a call for public delegations. So this is a time when members of the public can come up and speak to the commission, but cannot speak on items, referrals, or applications subject to a decision by the commission, or things that we're going to cover in public hearing, or things that are under litigation. So during delegations, the members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comments, but if anyone who's here today had wanted to talk to us about something that is not on the agenda and not part of the planned public hearing, now is the time for that. Let's jump right into the reports. Do we have any communications, Gary?
Oh, no.
Okay. And zoning representative, thank you so much for heading to our zoning meeting, the last zoning meeting.
Want to report from the podium?
Yeah, that would be great if you don't mind, so that we can just be mic'd.
There wasn't really anything as far as decisions. They were going to propose a 7:00 PM meeting time, but they moved that to the next meeting. Other than that, the only thing notable is Bill Mulholland, you know, since the zoning commission's been so slow, noted that there's several applications in the works, so they're going to get busy again soon. And that was about it.
All right. Thank you. Thanks again for subbing in. Mr. Weber, an ex officio report today. Do we have one?
Sure, I can use the speaker, I guess.
Thank you.
So for the last month or so, we've talked about score a little bit. They came in and gave us a presentation, maybe germane to this board. The Dominion building down on Main Street, we talked about that. It was going to go back to Millstone, but we're going to hold it, hold back the decision on that for a little bit, so Main Street can talk about options. We've had executive sessions on a couple of pieces of property that may eventually come to this board. Gary gave us a presentation on the Eastman on exit 74 for I-95, for the bridge work. And we released Darrow Pond under the control of Parks and Rec, so they could do the ARP study, which again, may or may not be of interest to this board. And for the last month or so, that's about it.
Great.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our Planning Director report. Mr. Gashel?
For the sake of time, I'm going to like commute and end.
Absolutely. And we do not have our report this month out of Plan of Conservation and Development or Chairman's report. Just move quickly to the approval of the minutes on our agenda is the approval of the regular meeting minutes of August 9th, 2022. I guess we've been as slow as zoning. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Rich. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the regular meeting minutes of August 9th? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. And that brings us to tonight's public hearing, where we are going to talk about the work that the Affordable Housing Subcommittee has been doing for some months now in partnership with Goman York and Mr. Pollan, who is here to speak with us tonight. So I think we're going to start off with some introductory comments from yourself and then open it up to any public feedback as needed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the introduction. I just looked over at that wall and I feel like I'm in a TV studio with On Air. Actually, I like that, first time I've seen a community, so. For the record, my name is Donald Pollan, done with the firm of Goman York Property Advisors. We've been working with the town and the Staring Committee on the development of affordable housing plans since, I believe, June. My intent tonight's to do a short presentation, I'm guessing it's probably going to take about 20 minutes, to present the plan in a summary format, and then we can open it up for a discussion if you have Q and A from me or from the audience, so. With that said, you've had a draft plan before you, I think now, for about a month, maybe a little bit more, that's, I believe, has been available on the website. I'm going to touch on a number of topics that are covered in it. I'm not touching on the plan in full this evening, and I'll talk more about that as I move through it, but essentially providing an overview. I want to start off with the topic of kind of why affordable housing now. I think that's a question that a lot of people may have, and the plan discusses in greater detail. But over the past few years, and dating back to 2017, the Governor's Office and the State Legislature have essentially made affordable housing a priority on a statewide basis. And in 2017, the Legislature passed Public Act 17170, which established what's now known as Section 8-30 GA. And that requires that every five years, each municipality prepare an affordable housing plan. That is essentially the plan we're here for tonight, is the creation of that plan. And if you count the years from 17 to 2022, that's the first five-year cycle. I think it's also important, because at the end of the day, recommendations in the plan target, or we make recommendations specifically for modifications to zoning, and I think it's important to mention Public Act 2129, and that was the more recent piece of legislation that made a lot of alterations and changes to zoning. And I think it's important to point out that there's now a statement within 8-2 of the general statutes that says zoning must affirmatively forward fair housing. And that's a substantial change. While at the end of the day, nothing is supposed to impede fair housing, but now incorporating that language into the statutory authority for zoning means that communities really need to be more proactive in their actions to forward fair housing, and that includes affordable housing. The fact that we're planning for affordable housing now isn't necessarily new, dating all the way back to the early 1990s. Section 8-23, the Plan of Conservation and Development statutes, and also Section 8-2 related to zoning, have required that we make provisions for housing, development of housing opportunities, multifamily dwellings, and the plan also promote housing choice and economic diversity in housing, including both low and mod. So the fact is, this isn't something new. It's something we should have been doing. When I say "we," I just mean collectively planning. I'm not saying you guys haven't been. But it's something that we, the planning profession, should have been doing for the past 30 years. The recent Public Act in 2017 now makes it very clear that a specific affordable housing plan must be completed on a five-year cycle. How we arrived here tonight, just kind of an overview of the process that we've gone through. The state awarded East Lime a competitive grant for this affordable housing plan. The work on the plan began in June of 2022. We did a bunch of research, review of existing plans, your prior affordable housing plan, which I want to applaud your community for. You're the only community I know of, that doesn't mean there weren't any others out there, but that over a decade ago actually produced an affordable housing plan, so kind of well ahead of the curve. And we also did some socioeconomic demographic and housing market analysis. Then between June and August, actually between June and September, a number of reports were issued to the Staring Committee, starting with a presentation that kicked off our process on understanding affordable housing, then a report on recommended modifications to zoning regs, and then also a housing needs assessment and an evaluation of potential incentives for affordable housing. And we also did a comparison of demographics and affordable housing with your neighboring communities. I should say, at the end of the day, the plan itself is light on data, and it's more on narrative and policy, and that's because the data analysis is in those prior reports. I have drawn on some of that data for this presentation, just to provide context. Over this time period, the Staring Committee provided a half dozen or so public work sessions. There was a research, that's, I'm sorry, that's a duplicate from what I was doing above, the second bullet's supposed to be gone there. And then we recently hosted a focus group, or I should say, I recently hosted a focus group with some developers who have built housing and/or affordable housing in the community, to get some additional feedback. And then the draft plan is ultimately what's before this commission tonight. So understanding and defining affordable housing, near impossible to do just simply in one slide, but that's my task at hand. Depending on what we're talking about, how we're talking about it, or what government program we're talking about, there are many different definitions for affordable housing. In the context of land use, though, it's 8-30G that is most often used as the reference point for kind of defining affordable housing. And that relies ultimately on standards set forth by HUD, Federal Housing and Urban Development. And so basically, from a definitional standpoint, housing is believed to be unaffordable, or is defined to be unaffordable, when a household spends more than 30% of their income on housing. That's not just mortgage and mortgage or rent, that's your collective expenditures on housing, that would include mortgage, rent, taxes, insurance, and utilities. So in that context, you know, you're probably talking 22% to 25% of gross income going to, say, rent, and then the other things filling in the remaining 30%. Qualified affordable housing, which is defined in 8-30G, is specifically, one ties to housing set at values that the household does not pay more than 30% of their income on. And then there's specific requirements as to land use applications under 8-30G that require housing at both 80% AMI and 60% AMI. For context here, when we're talking about AMI, which is area median income, I provide, at the bottom of this slide, I provide a summary of Connecticut's median household income, New London's and East Lime's, and then the 80% area median income on the right-hand side. And as you can see, East Lime's income runs, you know, higher than Connecticut's and also higher than New London County's, and that's not surprising at the end of the day. For 80% of area median income on the county level, that would be approximately $60,000 a year in income. And I just want to be clear that, at the end of the day, when we're talking 80% AMI, we're really not talking about low-income households. We're talking about, you know, salaries that teachers earn early in their career, or police officers, or others. I will talk about some lower-income brackets a bit later. So then, the idea of why affordable housing, a number of concepts here that are pretty common in discussion around affordable housing. It provides for a social and economic stability of households, families, and communities. Homes are where jobs go at night. I always try and emphasize to my clients that housing is a part of economic development. If you don't have houses, you can't house workers, and if you can't house workers, you have trouble attracting jobs. Quality affordable housing is key to social and economic prosperity. Diversity, whether it be social, economic, or cultural, is a cornerstone of resilience. Resilient communities withstand shock and disturbance and change. With a lot of the work that I do in the Hartford area, I often use West Hartford as an example. While West Hartford's viewed as a very wealthy and upper-middle-class community, when you actually review its demographics, its income, its race, and so forth, on the racial side of things, it's probably the most diverse community in Greater Hartford, meaning having the greatest balance of multiple races. And it's also extremely diverse in its kind of income, and extremely diverse in its housing stock. And with that comes this kind of resilience that it can weather the storm. If the single-family housing market takes a hit, it has a strong multifamily market and vice versa. Past generations benefit from affordable housing and the associated wealth creation. Future generations should also deserve so. You know, I often talk about my own personal experience. Both my parents were blue collar. They did not go to college. They bought a house in 1971, and it was the equity in that house that leveraged the ability of both my sister and I to go on to college and end up where we are today. So the benefits of affordable housing kind of snowball through a society. And when markets don't meet the basic needs of society, government does have a role to assist and intervene. I'll get back to this Venn diagram on the right-hand side later on in the presentation. This was the comparison we did with your surrounding communities, and I don't want to go into all the data and all these, I just wanted to show it, but it's the top-left table here that I did want to point out. This is the state's 2021, the most recent data for the Affordable Housing Appeals list. That's the 8-30G legislative requirements. And it breaks down the types of housing that is, that meet the qualifications of qualified affordable housing under 8-30G, and that's government-assisted, tenant rental assistance, CHFA mortgages, deed restrictions, and your community has a total of, and why do I think that number is, I don't know, I put the wrong number elsewhere in the presentation, my apologies. You have a total of 520 qualified affordable housing units in your community, which totals 6.15%, which falls below the 10% threshold set by 8-30G. For members of the public that may not know, what 8-30G does is it basically says if a community does not have 10% or more of its housing as qualified affordable, then it's subject to the provisions of 8-30G, which allow a development, a developer to propose an application, in so long as it meets certain affordability requirements that can circumvent aspects of the zoning regulations. So in some ways, that 10% is viewed as an important number. The fact is, most communities in Connecticut do not reach the 10%, are not above the 10% number. I'm not saying that's good or bad, it's just the reality. And for many communities, the ability of achieving the 10% number is challenging. At the end of the day, every time you add new housing, your numerator and denominator are changing, and then ultimately, you know, it becomes hard to play catch-up there. That being said, out of your neighboring communities, East Lime has the most affordable housing, or at least a percent of total for affordable housing compared to your neighboring Another big area we focused on through the research and then in the plan is on changes in demographics. I think this is extremely important when we're talking about housing in general, but also affordable housing. The fact is, we're not the society we once were. We probably all intuitively know it, but not necessarily know how to describe it. I think back to my childhood, when my neighborhood was overrun with children, and now my parents' house in that same neighborhood has very few, if any, children. And that's due to, we're changing. Fertility rates and household sizes have been in decline for decades, all the way back to 1960. Connecticut's fertility rate just since 2008 has declined from 1.88 to 1.51. What that means is for every person that passes away in Connecticut, 73, or 27 fewer people are born. So if you're basically sealed off the borders, kept us all here, give us a long enough time, we will die off, because there are more deaths than there are births. We don't have as many children as we used to. We marry less, we marry later, and we have fewer children. And for Connecticut, as you see, median age, Connecticut is older than the United States in total, and then New London County is older than Connecticut, and then East Lime's median age is older than all of them. You're an aging community, and also aging communities don't have as many children, which creates this vicious cycle of you age faster. The present, the percent of married couple households with children in 1970 was 43. 43% of households were married couples with children. Today, that number is approximately 19%. So essentially, if you think about it, half of the married couple with children went away. Nationally, 28% of households today are one person. In 1960, only 13%. These are dramatic demographic changes in our society. If you think about it, hold all things equal, have zero growth whatsoever, just the increase in the number of one-person households creates tremendous demand for housing. The difference between 13% and 28%, every one of those individuals, single-person households, is a new housing unit that needs to be provided. It also means that we have more single-income households than we ever had before. The percent of children living with only their mothers increased from 8% to 23% between 1960 and 2016, and 1% to 4% with those only living with their father. The fact is, and I think it's always important to make this clear, a lack of affordable housing harms single mothers greater than any other segment of kind of population demographic. And most of the housing stock, especially single-family detached, was built to serve the needs of family households of the past, not the smaller, predominantly one- and two-family households of today. The fact is, housing lasts a long time. And when you look back and say 40% of households were married couples with children in 1960, and we all know kind of that period of residential suburban boom, we built a lot of housing to meet the needs of families. And skip ahead 70, 60 years or so, and the fact is, there's just not as many families. So kind of the market has changed as to demand for housing, or what type of housing. So on this slide, this is a breakdown from the census of income by income brackets, but at the bottom, most importantly, median household, median income. All households in East Lime, and then family households as defined by the census, married couple families, and then non-family households. Most of your, most if not all, actually, all of your single-person households would fall into the non-family households. And the difference between median household income of $96,000 for all households to $52,000 for one, for non-family households, is that difference between kind of the families and married couples versus the single-person household. My point here is being this increase in single-person households, as I already said, has created a larger percent of households that are single income. And therefore, without the second income, we don't see the incomes being as high. And ultimately, that translates into an affordability challenge. Housing stock built for families with dual incomes, and now 28% of the population being single-person households. If you look down at the charts at the bottom, New London County's on the left and East Lime is on the right, pretty staggering numbers, if you haven't seen them before. But essentially, 63% of your, almost 64% of your owner-occupied housing stock is only one- or two-person households. And on the renter's side, it's, was, 80% are one and two persons. Actually, 44.4% of your renter households are single person. So we've changed demographically, and that means housing and housing needs have changed. Being a coastal community, and being a community that takes environmental issues seriously, I think it's important to kind of talk a little bit about the Venn diagram on the right-hand side, which is the kind of how sustainability is defined, the idea of this overlap between social, environmental, and economic factors. The definition below comes from the United Nations, it's kind of the agreed-upon sustainability definition. And it says, "development that meets the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs." And that's usually where the quote ends, but it's the next sentence that I think is important in this context, is that "doing so must integrate and balance economic, environmental, and social goals." In planning, and I'm guilty of this myself as a planner, I think in general, we have favored environmental issues over social and economic issues for a long time. That open space preservation, farmland preservation, coastal issues and so forth, get a lot of real estate in plans of conservation, development, and in other considerations within the land use process. I think the challenge is, when we're then, and you as a community have done an outstanding job on the environmental side, with all your plans and so forth, most of which are required by law, to deal with your, you know, your sensitive environment as being a coastal community. But at the end of the day, I think the privilege that the environment has been given within land use has created harm on the social and economic side. And if we're talking about affordable housing, then I think it needs to be, you know, discussed, and that's why it's in the plan. So the tough, challenging thing is, how do you actually create sustainability through striking a balance? And that means that at some points in time, you know, the social may take a hit in favor of a greater environmental concern, but at other points in But at other points in time, the social may have to be privileged over, say, the economic. And I can do that in multiple different ways with those three uh items. Uh, but recognizing the struggle is, how do we find that balance? So then, another thing I wanna, I confront in the plan, uh, or we confront in the plan is ultimately. Uh, the impacts of multifamily and affordable housing on property values. It's a very common concern that gets raised in the uh land use approval process. Is probably one of the greatest challenging hurdles for housing development, affordable or not, to overcome any development in some ways. But often, there's this concern that higher-density multifamily housing is gonna negatively impact existing housing stock. And these aren't my words on this page, these are academic and industrial, industry studies. Uh, basically over the past two decades that have consistently shown, and I've, there's dozens and dozens more. That I've gone through, that consistently show that high-density uh mixed-income rental developments in single-family neighborhoods does not affect the value. That fear of potential asset value loss among suburban homeowners is misplaced. Uh, whether it be MIT, Harvard, or Virginia Tech, uh, University of Utah. The findings over and over again have been the same on this. So I think at the very least, we need to dispel that myth and uh, you know, figure out ways to get beyond it. As part of the plan, setting up kind of the policy statements is this idea of these guiding principles. Uh, some of them date back to your two thousand nine plan, uh, and were inspired by it. And then some of them are new, like the fair housing, but essentially to protect and preserve and do no harm. Uh, to the physical aesthetics and cultural character of the community. Uh, to focus on the needs of East Lime residents and employees. Uh, to focus more so on redevelopment than on greenfield development. That housing and affordable housing can be used to reposition older commercial areas. Or older properties that are struggling uh to find new life as things change. And to balance uh a sustainability approach to housing. And then ultimately, to ensure that we meet the needs of fair housing, especially the new legislative requirements in the context of zoning. This chart on the left is the census breakdown of percent of of the households spending thirty percent or more of their income on housing. Uh, and what, and it has total occupied properties, then owner-occupied, and then renter uh in the right-hand column. And what we see in short here, and in the interest of time, what we see here is that the affordability problem lies more uh mostly on the rental side of housing. Not the owner-occupied side. That's not to say that there aren't, you know, struggling owner-occupied uh households. Uh, but the majority of need difference be- below fifty thousand dollars a year in income. Uh, which is approximately sixty percent AMI. Uh, thirty-nine percent of renters spend more than thirty percent of their income compared to thirteen percent of owner-occupies. I should also note that owner-occupied, the census in counting wealth counts earned income, doesn't count assets. Uh, or investments, so therefore, in the affordability challenge on the owner-occupied side is probably a. Aging retired population with low-earned income, but doesn't necessarily mean uh that they're impoverished. As you move higher up, then you see that affordability becomes less of an issue uh in the income brackets. And we then did a housing needs assessment, detailed look of comparing incomes to kind of the existing housing stock to determine. You know, where need was the greatest. And we did it for both owner-occupied housing and for rental-occupied housing. This slide on the owner-occupied housing basically shows us that the greatest need is below seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, at incomes below seventy-five thousand dollars, that's not surprising. And it shows the greatest need uh kind of below fifty thousand dollars in income. I think I, I think the narrative in the plan says it, but I think I should repeat it here. Or at least say it if the plan didn't say it explicitly. Uh, at the end of the day, uh, you're not gonna solve affordable housing on the owner, homeownership side for the lowest-income households. You know, trying to expect that a household earning below the federal poverty level of about thirty percent AMI is actually gonna achieve home ownership. Uh, is probably unrealistic. Uh, so it's at the upper end here, in that kind of fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar range. Uh, which is pushing between sixty and eighty percent AMI. Where you have a demand for, say, four hundred and sixty more housing units at that price point. Uh, that's where you can probably make the biggest difference on the ownership side. But it's still challenging, just due to the cost of housing on the ownership side. On the rental side, your numbers are really interesting compared, uh, you know, I've looked at these numbers, not just doing these of, these plans. But in other ways, in so many communities across the state. And uh, your, your numbers lay out pretty similar to other communities in some ways. But there is one really interesting thing on the rental side here. Uh, and that is in those middle-income brackets, or at least in this context of this chart. The thirty-five to seventy-five thousand dollar range there, that's not in red, in negative. Uh, the fact is, your rental housing serves that kind of fifty to s- uh, eighty percent AMI pretty well. Uh, I don't typically see that, so it's kind of interesting. Uh, compared to other communities, though, you're also like other communities. And that the greatest need for rental housing is in the lowest income brackets, and you see it there at below thirty-five thousand dollars per year. I think it's also important to be clear, and that's what the additional consideration uh says there, that narrative that comes from the plan. You're not gonna solve uh the affordability issue for the lowest-income households through zoning and land use alone. It requires other interventions, like state voucher programs or federal low-income housing tax credits and so forth. There needs to be direct government intervention. And a municipality on its own uh typically doesn't have the resources, that's why state and federal programs are required. But you can make a difference in the higher income brackets of affordability in the sixty to forty percent AMI range. So just a couple more slides here, getting down to ultimately the recommendations in the plan for strategies that East Lime can use moving forward. Uh, the first set of recommendations are related to regulatory revisions specific to zoning. I'll speak to those specifically, and then these other areas that I'll discuss. Uh, so really, uh, as I've told the steering committee through this process. Uh, I've reviewed a lot of zoning regulations for barriers to housing. And all in all, your regulations were actually in pretty good shape. I had to nitpick a little bit to come up with this, you know, long list of bullet points here. Uh, but the nitpicking's good, cause there are some things that need to be addressed. But in general, uh, I think some relatively modest tweaks to your regulations will go a long way. To better encouraging housing overall, regardless of specifically affordable. And if you do uh add more housing, uh, then you will benefit the affordability side of the equation also. Uh, so some of the nitpicking, in the purpose section, uh, the purpose section should include the language from eight dash two regarding multifamily. Housing and low and moderate income housing, and also should have a statement related to affirmatively forwarding fair housing. Uh, what's called the plan section, uh, related to the statutory requirements. Uh, I believe you're still using the fr- the word "character" of the district. Uh, and changes in statutory authority don't allow us to consider character ever anymore in decision-making. That it's physical character and it has to be explicitly laid out in the regs. So the regs make a recommendation, the plan makes a recommendation to make that change. That your definition section should probably define affordable housing, and it should be based on the eight dash thirty G definition of affordable housing. Uh, that accessory dwellings should be considered as a housing uh approach. Uh, East Lime, so we typically talk about single-family housing, multifamily housing. What falls in between that are the two families th- and three families and kind of four-family housing units. Uh, that's referred to as missing middle. Uh, East Lime actually has a pretty substantial amount of missing-middle housing compared to other communities. Uh, but my recommendation there, there are some zoning provisions that kind of, when you go from a single-family to a two-family, you require the lot size to double and so forth. Uh, those types of provisions are barriers, uh, so the recommendation to adjust those. Mixed-use dwellings, it says, "Consider removing the increased lot size and the per-bedroom increase in lot size." This is similar to the missing-middle stuff, kind of say, okay, we want mixed-use, but we're gonna make you have a lot more land if you wanna do it. And just kind of my argument is, why? Uh, and so the plan recommends kind of uh ratcheting back some of those increased requirements. Uh, "Consider allowing standalone multifamily developments or residential units on the same site as commercial development." When mixed-use started becoming popular thirty years ago, uh, everyone went in this direction of it needs to be, you know, mixed-use within the building. So residential over retail and so forth. And the ideal was nice, uh, but what we found is, that's actually the exception, not the norm. And especially finding throughout the state that the majority of mixed-use development is what I call mixed-use proximate. That it's residential being built on the site of existing commercial. Or side-by-side new residential with new commercial. Evergreen Walk in South Windsor is a great example, with a bunch of residential projects, developments that surround the retail. Uh, and commercial office, and I could go through a laundry list of sites, but I won't. Uh, and parking requirements, oh, attached multifamily, reducing the minimum lot size, once again. Uh, parking requirements, ratcheting back your parking standards. Uh, as we've changed as a society, as we've become more flexible in the way we work, the way we do things. Uh, we just don't need the same amount of parking as we once needed. Uh, I, I live in an apartment and my building has eight units in it. And uh, ten people, no children, so it's all adults, and eight units, ten cars. Do the math, you don't need two cars per unit anymore as we typically require, and some regulations push even higher than that. The fact is, parking needs have changed as single-person and two-person households have increased. Minimum residential standards, uh, that Public Act twenty-one twenty-nine. Has basically made it legal to have any, for zoning to set minimum, minimum unit sizes. And throughout your regs, you have those provisions, so they should be removed. And then thinking about allowing a percent of conservation developments uh to include duplex or semi-attached townhouse style. This is something we're seeing a lot more out there, I've been involved in developments approved in Cheshire and, I'm drawing a blank on the second one. Uh, but that developers, oh, uh, Stonington, uh, can't think of the name of it now. Anyways, the developers and consumers have found a desirability to these kind of higher densities, smaller lot, single-family developments. That have a mix of duplex and townhouse units within them. Uh, and it's a way to probably pull off a little bit higher density and still meet your conservation uh policies or goals. So then, the other recommendations around kind of the incentive side, not the regulatory side. Some of it ties back to the regulatory side, there's a recommendation to create, create a housing overlay zone, affordable housing overlay zone. In areas, that can be applied in areas, I leave it up to zoning commission ultimately determine what's best for areas. But in areas served by public water and public sewer. Uh, that consider creating an inclusionary provision that would require. Uh, a percent of affordable housing units as part of developments over a certain size. Uh, and I was involved in the Affordable Housing Plan, and then ultimately, regulation updates in Tallinn, and we did, did just that. Tallinn has only like two point six-three percent affordable. And we put in a provision that required five percent of units on developments of ten units or more to be uh, to be affordable. Uh, recognizing, they're not gonna achieve the ten percent, but the five percent keeps them moving at least in the right direction. And that could be tied to a fee in lieu of affordable housing provision, and ultimately, the last recommendation, which I'll get to the Housing Trust Fund. Uh, as I always recommend to communities, this isn't to say that Gary doesn't run an efficient permitting program. Or that the zoning commission doesn't run an efficient permitting program. But I think it's something we should always be evaluating, how to be more efficient in permitting processes. And a big part of that, from a regulatory perspective, is trying to reduce the reliance on special permits. The more you can allow through the site plan process, uh, the more confidence you create kind of in the marketplace. Uh, if we're talking about affordable housing, maybe housing in general, but specifically affordable housing. Permit fees do work their way into the cost of housing. And while your housing permits aren't excessive, uh, I was involved in a development in New York State. Where six percent of the total development cost, which was actually about six point eight million dollars, was permits and fees. The irony was, we were requesting a twelve percent tax abatement from local government. And I was kind of chuckling, like, if we just got rid of the permits and fees, we probably wouldn't need the tax abatement. It can be a way to help the affordability. Uh, property tax abatements uh have become more and more common. Ten years ago, I never thought I would stand up in front of a community and say, "You should consider property tax abatements for uh residential development." They were kind of something that we reserved only for commercial development, economic development. Uh, I can rattle off a half dozen or more communities that, over the past five years, have granted. Uh, multiple tax abatements for residential developments. Recognizing the benefits of higher-density uh multifamily developments on the property tax side. And then the last, which I think is the most powerful tool, especially if it's paired with an inclusionary zoning provision, is the Housing Trust Fund. The statutory authority for a municipality to create funds that go beyond a single budget cycle. That can, you know, roll over year to year. And they have to be established for specific causes, housing is one of them. And then you can either, you can fund it in multiple ways. Uh, you can put money in on a yearly basis, you know, you could say the town's gonna put a hundred thousand in. Or you can divert permit fees, if you don't waive them, into it. So permit fees on housing go into the Housing Trust Fund. Uh, you can also accept charitable donations, uh, as a municipality, tax-deductible charitable donations, and they could go into the Housing Trust Fund. So there's many ways you can fund the Housing Trust Fund, and build up a kitty of money that you can then actually use as, to incentivize. Or to build and create affordable housing. Uh, and Fairfield's been at it for some time, New Canaan has a substantial uh one. And in Tallinn, our inclusionary provision tied to a fee in lieu of provision that tied to a creation of a Housing Trust Fund. So the zoning commission adopted the inclusionary provision and the fee in lieu of. The Board of Selectmen adopted the establishment of a Housing Trust Fund. And now on applications that require five percent affordable, the developer has the option. Build the five percent of the units as affordable, or pay fifty thousand dollars per unit into the fee in lieu of. Uh, based on the fee in lieu of, into the Housing Trust Fund. Uh, and. And we think that's a viable approach. Stanford, I believe, requires like a hundred thousand dollars in their fee in lieu of, but a very different market than say Talland or New London County and so forth. So essentially, that is it. The last section of the plan has the implementation schedule that kind of lays out both priorities, responsibilities, much of it leaning on the zoning commission since there's so much regulatory. But then things like property tax abatements or Housing Trust Funds that would require involvement of probably multiple agencies, zoning commission, planning commission, board of selectmen. I know I ran a little bit longer, my apologies, but I'm available for questions or you can make me sit down and hear from the public. Thanks.
Thank you so much. I just wanna remark on how informative all of the data gathering has been through this whole process and to publicly thank you as well as the steering committee, which may include everyone here except myself, including members of zoning. You know, thank you for all your work on this. That said, does any, do any members of the commission currently seated have questions before we open up to comments from the public?
No.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you. All right, at this time, if anyone wants to speak to their thoughts on this plan, I'd ask you to please come up and just state your name and address for the record before you share your thoughts. Yep, please, someone's gotta break the ice.
Hi. I promise I won't be long, I am bringing up notes, but that's, just I'm used to that now. So I-
Oh, address.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Nick Minipace, I live at thirty-eight Hope Street here in Niantic. I did really, well, enjoyed the entire presentation. I found it was very informative and it talked about a lot of things that I really hope that everyone, not just in the planning commission, zoning and board of selectmen and hopefully as many members of the community as possible can see, because I think it was extremely informative. I, especially like Mr. Poland pointed out, the affordability gap and talking about some of the issues that we had, you know, with past generations being able to strongly benefit, especially in our community, from that increase in housing, well, I shouldn't say of cost, housing values. And it was definitely a little, I won't say jarring, but a little surprising to see if we have, was it four hundred and twenty-two houses over five bedrooms? And then five hundred and twenty people who are needing assistance? And while it is technically in the realm of, yeah, we're about six percent, which is better than a lot of our surrounding communities, I mean, obviously, we're just barely over halfway to that goal of having ten percent housing for the community. But I did have a question for Mr. Poland that I wasn't sure if you were aware of or if the committees were. If those, was it twelve, almost about thirteen hundred unoccupied residents, does that include our residents that are only occupied as seasonal homes?
Likely.
Okay. So I guess I find that, you know, in a little bit of a lot of ways, the, you know, we talked about during the, well, it's been discussed in the past that we need a significant amount of more housing. And I know when this was proposed for adding in, or implementing the plan, the state proposed for more housing through, what was it, accessory dwelling units, that it met with some strong opposition from members of the zoning committee and especially from the board of selectmen. But I guess I would really like to say this, and it sounds like Mr. Poland is definitely showing that we, our community would very much benefit from things, something that people have been screaming about for quite a long time, that this is something that our community needs to do. We are not getting younger in this community, both literally and as well as demographically. That needs to be able to change. We cannot say, well, it's fine now and we don't wanna have more kids that have to go through school or something like that. Our community cannot become one that is without children in it. And we are seeing that this is not just an issue here in East Lime, but it is a trend nationally. And I do appreciate that this is, sounds like the committee is very receptive to this, and Mr. Poland's presentation was very clear on this needing to be a priority for us. And I really do hope that you all take that in advisement. I hope that the people of our community, the board of selectmen, the zoning commission also view it as such a priority. All right? I think that's, that's for me, but thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to talk during the public hearing? Okay. Any further comments by Mr. Poland as far as in the public hearing?
I have no further comments unless you have questions.
Any questions from the commission? Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Nicole, second. Tom, thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of closing the public hearing on the Affordable Housing Plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? All right, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. So we, we can discuss and vote on this tonight, should we want to, under old business. Correct?
Correct. And being that I'm gonna just, the public hearing is closed, I'm gonna suggest we just move on with the agenda, subdivisions, because our town attorney's here.
Yep.
For the next referral.
Yep. Works for me. So let's move right over to municipal referrals. And we do have requests from the town of East Lime, Board of Selectmen, for an eight dash twenty-four municipal review of the acquisition of Riverhead Cemetery, property located at Boston Post Road. East Lime assessor's map, thirty-six point zero, lot fifty-seven, approximately one point zero one acres. And I see we are getting some material about that.
Yeah, so our town attorney, Ed O'Connell, if you'd like to answer any questions. The memo I have there before you, basically, we reiterate, eight dash twenty-four statutes and indicate that no municipal agency or insurance body shall locate, except that in by narrow extent, the street bridge, parkway, or the public way to locate, relocate, substantially improve, acquire land for, abandon, sell, or lease any airport, park, playground, school, or other municipal-owned property or public building, relocate or extend any public housing development, redevelopment, or permanent rule project, or, or locate or extend public utilities, terminals, or water, sewage, light, or power, transit, and other purposes. And total proposal today, such action has been referred to the commission's law report. As such, it is here before you now. I'll leave it to Mr. O'Connell to give you the details that are-
This presentation will not involve any slides on the screens or anything like that. It's much more basic and informal. This pertains to the Riverhead Cemetery, which is a piece of land up near the I ninety-five area. And I don't know how many exhibits got to your, to your attention prior to this meeting. Do you have any of them in your packages? You do. If you know the location of it, it's bounded on the north by I ninety-five. It's bounded on the west by the presently Noble Gas, which is being constructed, the truck stop there. It's bounded on the south by some property, but it has a right-of-way to the Boston Post Road. And it's bounded on the east by property which butts the Niantic River. That's how it gets its name, the Riverhead Cemetery Association. The town got involved in this when the company that owns the Noble Gas got in touch with the Cemetery Association to establish with finality the common boundary line between the gas property and the Riverhead Cemetery Association. They didn't want to find themselves encroaching on the cemetery property. And the Cemetery Association was very unorganized and we were authorized by, I'm representing the town, usually we're the town office for lawyers, and the town authorized us to help the Riverhead Cemetery Association. And we negotiated the boundary line and also some provisions with regard to the operation of the cemetery. The main one being that they, previously, the gate to the cemetery had been stolen, had been taken by people who wanted to bring the gate to metal people who would pay the money. And we got the people doing the gas station to agree to put a new gate in. And we also made sure that the road, that the trucks were going to be used, would not, would be fit, function in such a way that it would not go, that truckers would not be surprised and go to the cemetery. So we had some signs and a Y intersection, so the road would be constructed, actually improved in a great way so that the cemetery would benefit and the property owned by the truckers would be benefited, but there would be no confusion as to where the cemetery road was located. So we got a good deal going. So then it came time to sign the, sign the boundary line agreement, and we found out that there were not enough members of the cemetery around to be able to properly sign the agreement on behalf of the association. There's very, very few members of the Cemetery Association around. So what we had to do was change our course a little bit and look into the statutes and discover that we had to use the statutes which exist, which enable municipalities to take over old and disused cemeteries, which do not have a governing body of the associations left. So we did that. And the town held public hearings and gave proper notice through newspapers to take over the ownership of the association. And we did that. And the town now owns the property of the association. We worked in close concert with the remaining members of the association, and we have the records of the association. We have the locations of the burial plots and who is buried there and which families own the burial plots that are unused and those reside with the, will be residing with the town clerk. And we have very close contact with the people who ran and run the association. So there's no problem there. So now we own the association, and now we're in a position to have the town sign the boundary line agreement with the people who own the truck stop. But there's a statute called eight dash twenty-four, which requires a report from the planning commission to the board of selectmen regarding whether or not this is a good idea for the town to acquire the actual grounds of any land that the town is being, it's considering acquiring. And that is why we're here tonight. So we've asked you to look at the map and look at the grounds. And so before we formally file the, I can't say a deed, but it would be the document that the statutes require on the land, we would like you to report to the, to the board of selectmen. And at its next meeting, the board of selectmen will be considering authorizing the first selectman to sign the boundary line agreement. So we're at that stage. So it's, that's why we don't have any maps, we don't have anything on the, on the wall, we don't have anything on the, oh, actually, we do, I'll take, I'll take that back. Gary has put something up on the map, it above me, all around. And you can see it there, there's a long right-of-way and entry, which we'll be sharing with the, with the truck stop. And actually, if any one of us drives by on I ninety-five, if you see the truck stop being constructed, if you take a quick glance over your right shoulder, you will see the cemetery. It's one of the ancient cemeteries in the town. And that's, we have it set out and specified, and that's what it is.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Does anybody have any question?
I was just gonna ask if anyone had any questions for Attorney O'Connell. Seems very straightforward to me.
Yeah.
Anything else to add or should we go ahead and entertain a motion? Would anyone like to offer a motion? I can offer a motion?
No.
Go for it, Rich.
Planning Commission of the Town of East Lime exercising the authority, I can submit a motion that the Planning Commission of the Town of East Lime exercising the authority of the Planning Commission pursuant to section eight twenty-four of the general statutes. Having reviewed the proposal for the acquisition of land in the Town of East Lime referenced above, finds the aforementioned proposal favorable.
Would anyone like to second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney O'Connell.
Thank you.
Back to our agenda. We have moved into old business, and the first item here is a review of the subdivision regulation revisions.
So there's a current, as you were saying, by Tom Stat.
Yep.
We have, have a whole lot of progress with them, but we're keeping this here as a placeholder for discussion.
Perfect. Great. All right, into the Affordable Housing Plan update. I think here we can engage in any discussion or deliberation and determine whether or not we are ready to adopt this plan tonight or at our next meeting in December.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so-
We do have to, so I guess for deliberations, I did prepare a memo. Basically, this is just a history, kind of goes through having adopted the twenty-twenty plan of conservation development, recommendations from there, our request to vote the end to the time, and also the extension on the grant itself. So it provides that explanation. Essentially, as we held up our public hearing, which was not necessarily statutory or required, so a commendment or holding one, while not heavily attended, we did our key diligence. So that being said, you can deliberate and vote if you see truth. I did provide some language, if you wanted to move forward. I would note that the draft plan, these credits have to be added. So there are a few minor tweaks that have happened. Draft, the review, you can take it off. So I would think the final document would be more appropriate to vote on than this one at this time, as much as I would like to get it off our desk, but I think that would be problematic about it. I can also put together a different motion if you'd like, based on new deliberations I have.
All right. I'd love to just kind of go through the table and get any thoughts, you know, on your feelings on the current draft, any recommended changes that we would need to take care of before voting, or your thoughts on voting. So let's start with Olivia and then work down the table.
I think, can you hear me? I think we should wait until we have a final document to vote on this one. There's just, I mean, there's, it looks good to me, but there's a couple of like typing things and some of the charts and things that I think we need to have updated before we're ready to approve it.
Any substance changes from you, Olivia, that should be noted in the record or mostly just proofreading?
Just proofreading.
Okay. Nicole?
I feel the same. There's-
I feel the same. After the typos are corrected, I think it's fine.
Rich, any thoughts?
I concur. I'd like to hear from Kirk too, since he was the chairperson for the Affordable Housing, so.
Yep. Tom?
Same thing, I mean, he's going from a final draft and Kirk should have some say.
And Jason?
I also agree that waiting is best. There were some things that came up in his presentation that I thought were changed through consultation with the subcommittee. And when I saw them up there on the screen, I was a little surprised. So I would like a little bit more time to reconcile those.
Okay, anything that you want to mention now so that we can kind of get, not find ourselves in a position of having to edit the document in December?
Yes, specifically, he spoke about waiving fees and reducing permits, permitting costs.
Right.
And spent some time in his presentation extolling the virtues of that. It was decided by the subcommittee that that was not necessarily something we were prioritizing. So I would just be happy to take a second look at what his new, new draft looks like after seeing this presentation.
Okay, so that is in the draft circulated to us from October 14th, 2021. So between October 14th and now, there was a discussion about not having that in?
Yes.
So I, I think that would be something for this commission to discuss at the December meeting, whether we want to adopt with any changes to that. Yeah, I, I agree.
So I think, so in regards to that, the property tax abatement, I can just say historically, we never offer tax abatements to anyone, commercial, whether it can be for commercial developer or residential or industrial or commercial marine. So I don't know that that's something you do necessarily. It is something we can do. It's a tool in the toolbox if we choose to utilize it. The housing trust fund, it's interesting. That's a bit of a big thing to me in terms of, you see it with open space in particular, right, open space funds, the same type of a thing. And now it's also being done for economic development in commercial spaces as well. But certainly that's something to consider in the fee in lieu of another, you know, consideration. I'm not sure the full breadth of that impact would be. But kind of hearing what Dr. Pollard was saying, charging like a fee of $50,000 wasn't that tall? So, yeah, I'm getting.
They're all, they're expensive.
Per, per union, I mean, that's pretty significant. I imagine that's a quick. But again, the impact to the town is you're gonna end up blowing this bank account. And now is the town going to get into the business of being a housing authority? So how do we want to manage that? So I think before we start collecting those fees, we need to solve that, that question.
Yeah, and I view this very similarly to the plan of conservation and development in which some of these tactics are already explicitly defined. I think it's important to note that this is a roadmap or toolkit document and not a policy change. So any of the recommendations here would still need to go through all of the appropriate channels to become policy or become a new program, you know? So if, if the town determined something like the housing trust fund or tax abatements or, you know, fee in lieu of, you know, that would all go through the policy process. My, so myself personally, I'm comfortable with it in here as a tool that the town, you know, can look to should they want to enact it. Because this is not a policy-setting document. But I'd be interested to hear if that gets to some of your concerns.
Actually, we're talking about two separate things. He was talking about property tax abatement. I was talking about reduction of fees and permitting.
Yeah, and I, I view them all the same. Because that too would have to be determined through procedure, anything in here. We can't just decree by adopting this plan.
Right, but in the formation of this plan, it was decided amongst the members that this is not something we are, just didn't put it forward, which is why it's kind of surprising that it was put forward. I'm not really sure where to go with that. If you, as the chair, feel that it's better to have a wide palette of solutions, I can respect that. But I would say that that does kind of fly in the face of the subcommittee members' work.
Okay. The rest of the subcommittees here, I would love to hear it because that's what we're here to do, so.
So the subcommittee, some of the members are here, but they're not seated there in the audience? Is that what you're asking for?
You can participate in the conversation.
Oh, my God? I'm jeez, I don't think I can.
Okay, great. Because, but many of you are on the subcommittee as well, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I think that was the consensus from the last meeting that I conferred. Again, as you mentioned, this is only, these are only suggestions and, you know, I guess, to limit it, limited possibility, I guess, you can consider it. But I think that was the consensus at the last meeting that you shouldn't have it in.
So we're, okay, so it's kind of like a, I'm, I'm just summarizing to make sure I understand it correctly. It's a draft error that the subcommittee did not intend to have a reduction of permitting.
But Mr. Pollard was not at the last meeting, he was.
Okay, got it, got it.
Yes, he was ill, if I remember that.
Terry Donovan, while he is the chair of the zoning commission, he also sat on the subcommittee. So I think if you would invite him to speak.
Yes, please.
Mr. Peckham.
Mr. Peckham, sir, yes.
In addition.
Yeah, I'd like to.
And you're part of the commission, so that, as an alternate, you can speak and engage. But you can't vote. So if you want to hear from your audience?
Yes.
It'll be quick, I promise.
I, I do agree with you. These were merely suggestions, not policy and tools in the toolbox if we were to use them to help increase our number of affordable housing units. My big concern with the document, with the typos, of course, was the letterhead with Gorman in York, Goman in New York, sorry, on every page. I don't think it's necessary. I think it would take up extra space. And he's already got credit on the first page there, so that was my only main concern. I wanted to get off my chest. Thank you.
All right, and then addressing the, can I just ask?
Sure.
Addressing the permitting fees, I just want, I just want to make sure because I'm, I've thought that this was the draft approved by the subcommittee, but if we need to remove that because it was included in error, I just want to make sure that we're hearing from everyone, make sure.
Yeah, I mean.
Do you support removing the permitting?
I do support removing that particular one because I don't think it's really gonna help any. And, but yeah, again, you know, it's, they're tools in the toolbox, so.
Okay.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Couple of things in regards to the tools in the toolbox. I would suggest that if this board, the decision maker, doesn't recommend these tools, then you not forward them. And secondly, Mr. Pollard made a comment about reducing the, or simplifying, speeding up the process. And he says a lot of the stuff can be, doesn't have to be going to public hearing. That's something that should be very, very carefully considered before adopting that. This comment might be stuck in the plan that when you take away the public's ability to comment, you are asking for trouble a lot of times. So just be very careful with that one. Thank you.
Yeah, let's talk about that. I think what we are looking at here is on page 22 of the, well, hard number 2223, when you're looking at a PDF of the draft plan. So it's actually right above the permitting fee reductions or waivers. And it talks about efficient permitting, swift, simple, and certain. The recommendations in review and analysis recommended modifications to the zoning regulations report focuses on creating a swift, simple, and certain land use approval process. The greater certainty and predictability that can be provided in the land use approval process, the more likely housing will be built, including affordable housing. The zoning commission should continuously seek to maintain and improve an efficient permitting process for housing that reduces the reliance on conditional uses, i.e. special permits, and to allow more housing uses via as-of-right site plan approvals. So is, is that something that the subcommittee also did not intend to have in the final plan? That we should discuss and edit before reviewing the final draft and, and voting?
I don't think anybody was against efficient permitting.
I think the difference, you know, this is worded, so we can edit this to, I think, I don't, I don't want to say we want to reduce the reliance on special permits because we know that special permits automatically require public hearing versus just an as-of right. So you're gonna, as Norm was pointing out, if you're gonna loosen up the reins on that and say, okay, we're gonna allow a certain density as-of right or a certain number of units as-of right, look at that. But now you're getting into that world of, okay, we're not going to have a public hearing. Whereas, as Norm said, you're taking away the public's current right to speak on developments either. So it'd be interesting to go. So I would agree with Norm in this case, but something that we should consider and not take lightly.
Yeah, so as we're making this list of kind of edits that need to be made between now and our December meeting, are you proposing a reword or a removal?
I think you could put a period at the end, seek to maintain an efficient permitting process.
Yep, okay.
For housing.
Sure, sure. But I just recommend that staff proofreads it? And does the correction's necessary, saying that he is more familiar with it than?
Yes, but I'm also trying to get at the intent of the steering committee. But yes.
Because for us to go through like period.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just, I, what I'm getting at is it seems like the subcommittee, the steering committee intended to remove the permitting fee. And I would just want to make sure that the subcommittee is comfortable with just removing that line instead of the entire recommendation on efficient permitting. Proofreading, et cetera. I, I think that we kind of expected Gary to help us out with without identifying each one.
You gotta help her.
Yeah, I gotta help her, I gotta.
Any other substantive comments that need to be addressed before we, you know, continue this to next meeting?
I would just say that our, our chair, Kirk, got, did a wonderful job and had a lot to say. And I would really like him to weigh on, weigh in on this again in front of the whole commission.
Yeah, great.
I think he really wanted to be here. We're very close to getting an ivory scenario worked out. So as soon as I can train on how to set that along for the next meeting, maybe I'll do it that way if necessary.
Excellent, okay. So it seems like between now and December, we will address proofreading and format, a removal of the one permitting fee section and just a slight reword, taking out that last part of the sentence of the zoning, efficient, you know, zoning approvals.
And, Evan?
Yes.
Goman in New York.
I, category set under formatting.
Gary, we have a list of changes we need to, I'm just trying to find the email. I do have in my notes, I think we were planning on getting rid of those on here.
The, I'm sorry.
The efficient permitting and the permitting fee reduction or waivers.
Kirk was on that. Kirk wasn't joining. If I got that wrong, so.
I have to go back to mine as well. I'm sure you're sorry. But I have this right here, here, across the middle. Across the period, the application for most of us. So if you want to, okay.
Does that represent where we just landed?
It does.
Okay. Bless you. Okay, so we will take this up again at our next meeting. But once again, really great work.
Yes.
You can tell a lot went into it, so thank you. Other old business, plan of conservation and development. Nothing new to update there. Of course, one of the recommendations in the plan of conservation and development is to create an affordable housing plan update, so we're doing great. We do have some new business with the 2023 meeting calendar. And that, I believe, is in our materials. And we will need to vote on that.
January 10th to 17th?
Got it. And then we usually stumble around election day, but I see that is taken care of here as well.
And November 23rd?
I'll go ahead and move that we accept the 2023 calendar as, as proposed to us. Second, thank you, Olivia. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes. And with that, there is only one more item, except we did not actually, I, I did not get to the planning director report. We skipped that earlier to move along.
That's fine, I just wanted to let you know, I think I may have reported with Corinna with the, you know, word, Samuel Smith, according to Samuel Smith, that was replaced the roof and then kind of converted into a study on the dwelling itself before the state used funds to repair the roof. That being said, we finally got the personal services agreement signed by the first selectman back to the state's store preservation office, that the roof is already replaced. So we will go forward with the structural study and the rest of it. That will open the door to future dollars for other repairs or upgrading or whatever needed through the state's store preservation office. I think you already heard Mr. Donovan say, we do have some talent downstairs. As you do, I think you do, Ally Christensen, she's working about five hours a week. And Sam Geary, he's, we've got 20 hours in the office, so extremely talented. So much thanks to them for getting a lot of this done, so.
They got it going on us.
Pardon?
They got it going on us. That, that'll be all of us.
Fantastic, okay. Now we are at item seven on our, no, 12 on our agenda. Would anyone like to make a final motion here?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Jason?
Second.
Thank you, Olivia. All in favor? Aye? All right, any opposed? Meeting adjourned.